Seven o'clock, we will call the regular Village Board meeting to order. If everyone will rise to say the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will please call the roll.
Marovka here.
Jones.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Yep.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Yep.
All right, approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 12th, 2019 Regular Village Board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept as presented. Submove. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Marovka.
March?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 5th, 2019 Special Village Board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 12th, 2019 Public Hearing, TIF District 2. Any additions or corrections to those? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 12th, 2019 Public Hearing, Business Development District 1. Motion to accept those minutes. Submove. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Parker.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 8/10/2019, the amount of Accounts payable, general fund, $31,393, giving a total of all funds $31,393. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
And March?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions? No public comment. Reports of committees, village administrator report.
Uh, no report. Uh, you usually give one report at the beginning of the month if you haven't noticed. So I'll take any questions if, yeah. Of course.
Okay, yep, absolutely. Uh, no police chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
Um, obviously saw the traffic signals up, the corning and the 50. And, uh, I heard they were supposed to do some ditch work and landscaping today, but just got pushed back due to the rain, so. And then they want to get it wrapped up, so we can get that going later this week. And, uh, paving, uh, originally in East Corning was complete, and I don't know the exact date, but they're gonna start the patches within town soon, probably this week.
Good. Lights working well.
Good.
I think it's, really times out well if you come up on corning.
We've done the changes already.
Yeah, I like how it's, uh, get it set.
I like the black post.
Yeah, no, it does. It turned out good and, uh, yeah, so it's good to have it there. Uh, treasurer's report you have in your packet. Uh, Agent Jim, did you have anything that you wanted to report to the board?
Yeah. It's a period.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, a lot from Aquad, just, uh, kind of here for the update. This is some good news. We, uh, just got done with our round of LCR samples, lead copper samples, and you have to do it every system. Normally do them like every three years. We just have to come up at that time with Peatone. Uh, we've gotten all but two samples back, all clear, all good, so we're in compliance. Uh, the other two will come back fine, I'm sure, too, but, uh, as of, it's really left for the municipal, too, but we had enough samples, took extras, just being cautious on it. We're also gonna look in for some volunteers. Um, we want to harvest pipes out of some older homes in the community, uh, and just cut out a section of copper piping that has a joint in it, um, and then we do a chemist and everything, run all these tests for them, and it's gonna take a few months to run those tests for those. But we sent a plumber in to cut the pipe out, uh, we put new copper in there, uh, if anybody's interested, has a house that sold in 1986, I'd love to, uh...
Love to cut your pipe.
Cut your pipe, exactly. So, if you know anybody or anybody's interested, um, you know, the more the merrier, but, uh, we'll have to start somewhere. It's just one of the, one of the steps we're gonna do, the looking test they call it, just to make sure we're prepared for certain. Any questions?
Now, by cutting the pipe, does that create a problem with any of the users on either side of the pipe that you cut, or, I mean, is it isolated?
It's, uh, it's actually out of your house, like, if it's exposed, like, in your basement or something like that, we just, um, take out a chunk of it, you know, like, two feet if we can, and then replace it. Plumber's supposed to new pipe, then, so it shouldn't have any, and it'll be brand-new pipe.
Huge.
Um, I had a resident, I think it's 110 Northwest Street, they said that, uh, I think you guys had put in a new junction box a few months ago, and it still hasn't been landscaped around, there's still a pile of dirt around.
Respiration?
Yeah, maybe take a look at that.
I know Bob's been talking to, um, Brian, too, about making sure those restorations in the house.
Yeah.
I will, uh, put that on the list.
I think one of the questions that was raised, I think, I don't know if we talked about it at the last meeting, because I wasn't here, about the flushing program, have we gotten kind of up to speed on that, or were we at...
With the flushing of the system?
Yeah, like flushing hydrants, you know, in town. I think one of the residents was asking, and then I think Brian had said that they were a little behind because of everything that was going on.
Right, yeah, he said, he did say that, a little bit behind, but they are gonna get it done.
Okay.
So definitely be done, you know, as soon as they can, but, uh, it's definitely on the list, uh, to get it all done.
Okay.
I'll, uh, when I have, what else do I, I'll ask him if he's got an idea of the schedule, he's, maybe a two-week window or something like that when you start it.
Okay.
Because obviously you want to notify everybody.
Right.
That always creates the disturbance of the water, but you need to do it.
Good, good, perfect. Any other questions for Jim?
All right, thanks for the education on, uh, the small cell and the, I'm here, I'm thinking, thank you for the nice seats, by the way, that you...
All right, no, older, just, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Um, just a report from the AOC committee.
Oh, okay, yes.
Um, so we looked over existing livestock ordinance, and, uh, we're recommending no changes at this time.
Okay.
And then we also talked about, uh, fees for fence and sign variances, uh, and, um, we're gonna make some recommendations on actually having a small fee associated with that, to cover the administrative...
Good.
On Mr. Fee on what?
Fence, fence variances and sign...
Variances.
Variances. So that should be coming up in the next meeting or so.
Okay, good.
Steve. Building committee met.
Okay.
And we are gonna make some changes, uh, working with Amy on the shed regulations, and we did talk about an intergovernmental agreement with the fire department, and at this time, we're gonna hold off on that.
Okay. That's in regards to inspections and so forth?
Yep. Tom seems to think they can work that out.
Okay.
Cover some laws and...
Okay, good. Yep, communication is good.
Yeah, I think they, everybody's agreed to communicate better.
Good, okay. Very good. Any other committee reports? All right, then we will move on to new business, item A, ordinances. Number one, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan and projects for Peatone Tax Increment Financing District Number Two. Hello?
Hello, hello, everyone. Um, I met somebody who's here last time I was here, public hearing with Speed, okay, no relation, still there, but, uh, her client, uh, the attorneys, uh, Jacob and Klein, and if you recall, we started this process, well, we started planning this process, um, last spring, um, the plan, uh, the proposed TIF plan was filed with the village on June 14th. We had a adjournment view board on July 16th. I'm happy to report that they gave an affirmative recommendation that the area qualified, um, for moving forward with the TIF district. I think most of you were here on August 12th, we had a public hearing, uh, we had a good discussion, we had a lot of questions, we answered all those questions, I think, to everyone satisfaction. So tonight, we're at the point where we can approve the TIF and establish it. Um, it's a series of three ordinances that we have to go through, um, and I will leave all those with Amy, um, if we go through them, but a little bit of execution and signatures that are gonna need, and then you can get them back to us, because we have to file them. The TIF ordinances with the county, and we just move on to the Business Development District, not only that, you file with the county, but we'll have to file that with the Department of Revenue, and that has to be filed October 1st, if we're gonna start collecting, so we're in a position to collect it as of January 1st. So, so if anyone's got any questions, stop me. Otherwise, first ordinance is approving the redevelopment plan and projects. You've all seen the plan, it's on the screen behind you, the cover page. That ordinance provides that, uh, this, uh, village has to fight with the statute as far as the notices, the public hearings, the adjournment view board, the filings that are required, the publications, uh, you're making a finding that the area does qualify for inclusion in the TIF district, uh, based on the character qualifying characteristics contained in the plan, that the proposed redevelopment project area in the home was not the subject of growth and development through investment by private enterprise and whatnot, reasonably being this may do without the adoption of the redevelopment plan, that it conforms to your local ordinances, it's set up to be a 23-year TIF, which is the maximum allowed under all my law, there's a, it can be terminated earlier if the village so decides, it can also be amended, uh, because we're doing a 23-year plan, as, as good as we think the plan is, as much as what we've received from the village, and your staff, and Amy, and your engineers, and the public, and, and so we have the taxing bodies, obviously things can change, so there are provisions that can, to be able to amend the plan if necessary, and, um, we're making a finding that the redevelopment area would not be reasonably be developed without the use of incremental revenues, we all know that the development was planned out there, the necessary infrastructure is gonna be necessary, um, to support and to allow that development to happen. So that's the first ordinance, actually approving the redevelopment plan and the projects contained therein.
Questions, discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-29, approving the redevelopment plan and projects for Peatone Tax Increment Financing, Financing District Number Two. Submove. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee March.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the second ordinance, uh, designates the redevelopment project area for the TIF district area. Um, there's a nice long little description attached to this ordinance, um, but we're really working with the map of the area, which I'm gonna be watching, and we've worked with, uh, we're putting together, so I would ask that you consider adopting ordinance, I guess would be 19-30.
19-30, yes. Sir, questions, discussion? Submove. This would be ordinance number 19-30, designating the redevelopment project area for Peatone Tax Increment Financing District Number Two. Motion by trustee March, is there a...
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ham.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Uh, the third ordinance to implement a TIF district, uh, actually advises, uh, the county, Will County, that you have initiated the TIF district, and that the parcel list that's gonna be provided to them should have tax increment financing applied to those processes. In other words, it'll establish a ZAD, and any growth on those parcels while their TIF district is being committed, tax increment financing, and that's the money that's gonna be available to do the necessary infrastructure work of the areas of the proposed development. So that would be ordinance 1932, just adopting...
1931.
33, yeah.
31.
31.
Adapting tax increment financing for the area, any questions?
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Parker.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, we have one ordinance, uh, to designate and approve the Peatone Business Development District Number One, which would impose a retailer's occupation tax, a service occupation tax, and a hotel operator's occupation tax in the Peatone Development District Number One. This ordinance also, um, required some notice and a public hearing, which was held at the same time that we had the TIF hearing on August 12th. A publication was made in the Vada on July 25th and August 1st. Uh, by adopting this ordinance, you're adopting the, uh, Business Development District Plan, which the cover page is on the screen behind you, uh, it looks like this, everybody's seen it. Um, is there any questions about it, or what that could go about? And as I mentioned, this ordinance has to be filed with the Department of Revenue, but we'll also do that by October 1st, in order to begin collecting the additional 1% taxes, doesn't change what's your already, your sales tax in the area, it adds an additional 1% sales tax, uh, for the area, also hotel motel tax, there's to be a hotel bill, and then that's used as the incentive, again, to help pay for the infrastructure in the area.
This is ordinance number 19-32, designating and approving the Peatone Business Development District Number One, and imposing a retailer's occupation tax, a service occupation tax, and a hotel operator's occupation tax, in the Peatone Business Development District Number One. Submove.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Marovka.
Bowden?
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. If you have any questions, just feel free to let us know, um, we'll work with Amy and Amy getting everything implemented, um, and then we'll continue to go with, to plan everything with your council on, uh, the actual development agreement with the developer, so, and we'll have a number of conversations with Jim about that. So, if you all, Amy, I'll put this here, and we have to leave all this with the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, number five, an ordinance amending Title 10 Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations, Section 150.065 Building Permits of the Peatone Village Code relative to building permits in fees.
That is gonna take a longer than how I'm gonna explain this. Uh, you may have remembered, we did adopt, um, our building permit fees, uh, previously, but we had to do a little bit of tweaking, um, to this chart here, um, and so we are bringing it back to you, um, so, um, because it was more tweaking than we thought we could without bringing it back to you, so, let's just be honest. So, um, this would be the, the chart that we would put into the zoning code, and, um, we had ag buildings, uh, previously in the chart, kind of down below, on, kind of on its own, and, um, you know, Michael, I think that was adequate, and we needed to add more lines underneath it, so, um, we put it up into, underneath residential, so that, you know, we had more, um, line items that we could apply to ag buildings, such as alterations in remodeling and reconstruction. Um, previously, it just, really just had, um, one line item as, like, and, and that wasn't adequate for us to really apply, um, these, um, fees to it, so, we put it up in the residential. Will we have ag buildings? Probably not, but you never know, just like we might have estate residential someday, um, so...
Or a cultivation center.
Exactly. So, we really needed to, um, expand on those agricultural buildings, and, um, and so we needed to tweak this for you, and, and, um, clean it up, and, and we're bringing it back to you, and that's really the only change that we're, um, adding to this, so that's...
Questions, discussion?
Well, I'd say, I think, uh, buildings are exempt naturally, though, right?
Usually, yeah.
Why, it's maybe separate here?
Correct. Yes, usually they are, but, if we, and we talked about that, and we thought, well, well, I talked about it with building inspector, I meant, like, oh, maybe not you, but, um, we felt like, um, and you, so usually they will be, and that's why we don't anticipate any ag buildings, however, if we, we run across one, they're in residential. And we, and we feel like it's better to have it in there than, than not have it in there, so we don't anticipate using it, but, um, we, we probably should have it in there, too. Sometimes things come up that we don't anticipate, so we'd rather have it there than not have it there, and, um, that's why...
Yeah, it's always, it's always been there in the past, it's just being combined, the same fees as residential.
Correct. It, it's always been there in the past, and then, when we brought it forth to you previously, it wasn't in the format that it had been in the past, so we would just rather leave it the way that it was in the past, and...
Okay.
And then what we'll do is, is take this amended, uh, chart, and we'll insert it into what you approved for Safe Built in their contract, in their fee section, and we'll insert it into the, uh, their contract and the resolution that you previously approved. And we will begin to charge these new fees October 1st.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-34, and, uh, 1933, an ordinance amending Title 10 Land Usage, Chapter 150.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Number six, an ordinance authorizing condemnation, condemnation of certain property, Village of Peatone, Will County, Illinois.
So, we've been, we've been working with, uh, Iroquois Farms, and they are, on the west side of 88th Avenue, they own that, uh, that farm property, and we're trying to acquire about an acre of right-of-way, which, um, most of it is already road, and, um, we've been, we've been in discussions, and it, it's, it's going very slowly, so we're not, at this point in time, asking you for condemnation or eminent domain, but we feel like it's, uh, we would like to get our ducks in a row for that, we're, we've got our, um, the, the road construction for 88th Avenue, um, submitted, and engineering submitted to will.ni.n. We, we have to have, um, the right-of-way for that road to proceed with this project, there's just, there's no way around it, um, and, there's, we have a time constraint, we, there's, there's, there's no way around that, so, we've been negotiating with the landowner for several months, and they, um, they've been asking for reasonable, um, requests, so, we're, we're trying to make it happen, and we're gonna keep trying to make it happen, but we would like to put this in place, because we can't make it happen, so that's all we're asking for tonight, we're not asking for permission to, to go forward with it at this point, but we just want to get this in place, because we do need to come back to you for that option.
Which property was it?
It is, uh, the farm on, on the...
West side, uh...
Is it that house that looks like it's going down? Yes, yes, but that would be...
But it's, but we're talking about a 40, a 40-foot right-of-way.
So it's not even the house?
No.
No.
This is just...
This is at, at the corner of Wilmington Peatone Road and 88th Avenue.
Yes, there are no structures...
No.
There are no structures on the property, it's just basically, uh, to widen, you know, the road.
Right.
And, as Amy said, I think, the road is kind of extending in there already, it's just a matter of, approximately an acre total.
Right.
When you take the entire right-of-way.
That property's not technically in our annexation, is it?
It is not annexed, no. Correct? That's not, that's on the other side of the road.
Right, right. Can we condemn that side of it?
Yeah, you have the ability to own property outside your jurisdiction to condemn it.
Okay.
Because, again, it's within that planning area, so you have certain rights.
Okay, okay. Need to motivate some.
Right, we do. So, I think, no, no.
It's Wilmington?
Yeah, that's not it. I'm gonna go somewhere else.
You know, you guys, somebody knows where to...
You kind of get, get the idea. I, sure, I made a really nice exhibit, and I, if I can find that exhibit...
So like, as Amy said, basically, we're just trying to lay the groundwork, if we get to that point, I mean, we're gonna continue to negotiate with them.
Right.
And hopefully, we can come to, you know, an agreement and not get to that point.
Right, and, you know, we can, I think we've, we've got some hope, but I just don't want us to run out of time to get there, so...
If we don't do this, then he doesn't think that we will condemn it.
Correct.
Right.
Submove.
Second.
So this is ordinance number 19-34, an ordinance authorizing condemnation of certain property, Village of Peatone, Will County, Illinois, motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Bowden.
March? Wait, sorry, I'm sorry, I have a quick question.
Yes.
So if we, like, go forward and he doesn't agree with anything, and we have to condemn it, he doesn't get any money or anything for it?
No, he does.
He does, he gets fair market value.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
March?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, was there more?
No, go ahead.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
All right, item B, resolution, a resolution approving the master license agreement with Verizon relative to the placement of small wireless facilities on village infrastructure.
So this is one of the two things that I mentioned earlier, uh, this and the design standards. Uh, this is the agreement with Verizon that will govern, you know, kind of their, their specific sites within the community, um, they'll apply for site-specific permits that will be governed by this master license agreement.
Questions, discussion?
If we don't do anything with this now, what happens?
Um, what, what we don't want to happen is, it, like, like I said, we want the, to use whatever leverage we can, which is really the design standards and, uh, controlling the various scenarios that might occur through, through these agreements. It, you know, you can't, if you don't play ball with them, they will put in their permits,
It, you know, you can't, i- if you don't play ball with them, they will put in their permits. Um, if we don't meet the timelines, they'll use a remedy they have in the law that says they're deemed approved, and they will just go ahead and put their stuff up, yep.
Did the, the design standards and stuff, do we get to impose them, or do we have to negotiate them with?
Nope, we, we impose them. Uh, so there was a draft in one of the packets of the design standards, but it doesn't look like the resolution made it on, so we'll bring it back for next time, it's not on the agenda. But, uh, the design standards are in here, so, um, they are in the board packet. Uh, so if you guys wanna look at those, it's about an eight-page document between now and the next meeting. And, uh, when people come in, we'll, we'll put it online with our application that we're gonna give people. And if they turn in applications that don't meet these standards, then we say, uh, that, that's not satisfactory. You have to come back to us with an application that meets these standards, or we're gonna deny it.
So by approving this resolution, we don't lose any leverage, we still get to impose whatever design standards?
Correct.
We want.
Correct.
Those are reasonable?
Yep.
Okay.
So we need to bring back for the next board meeting the resolution adopting written design standards.
Correct.
This one.
Yep.
But this one we have on the agenda, which is...
We get them to fix their star again?
No, we gotta come back. So this is Resolution Number 19-R08, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a master license agreement for the co-location of small wireless facilities located within the useful right-of-ways. Resolution Number 19-R08. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Morewka, second by trustee Ham.
Morewka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yep.
Questions of the press? Correspondence, communications, petitions? I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property, is that a proper motion? Michael?
Yes. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee March. And there will be no action coming out of closed session.
You say acquisition of property?
Yes, of real property.
They're supposed to...
Thank Robert.
Hey, Jim?
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Morewka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Ham?
Yes.
We will go into closed session.